Today we are here to tell you a dire story which is going to change our and your lives. Our previous Vice Chancellor in a recent interview to the media has said that the JNU is what it is because of its teachers and students. Our story pertains to the teachers and how changing the teachers' composition at the university will change the nature of the university itself and for all practical purpose, change our lives. We will witness what we see as the JNU community disintegrate before our eyes.
In the last 10 months since January 2017, more than 30 selection committees have been constituted and more are being constituted even as we speak. And almost without exception, the majority of the experts in them have been from outside the recommended panel with scant attention paid to specialisations, even disciplines.
We would present evidence of gross violation of rules pertaining to the statutes governing the selection committees, subverting all checks on authoritarian practices and dismissing or undermining dissent and objections raised by the faculty at the selection committees as well as the academic and the executive councils.
We seek your permission to explain why it is of utmost importance for a public university like JNU to have a fair and transparent process of selection of faculty.
The means by which the candidates are selected should be above board. Besides, the process through which those who have to make assessment of candidates should follow a legitimate process clearly laid out in statutes and norms, follow to check any misuse of authority. It determines the academic standards of the university as every selection process needs to give equal opportunity for all possible claimants.
So what is the prescribed process to guarantee free and fair selection?
In the case of the universities like the JNU, the appointment of faculty is done by the Executive Council on the recommendation of a duly constituted selection committee. The rules are clearly laid out in the relevant clauses 2A and 9 of Statute 26 of the university.
The Statute 26. Appointed teachers of the university shall be either employees of the university, appointed by the Executive Council as professors, readers or lecturers. No person shall be recognised as teacher of the university except on the recommendation of a selection committee constituted for that purpose.
Please note that the composition and constitution of selection committees for faculty appointments in universities are currently governed by the University Grants Commission's rules prescribed for universities and colleges under Regulation 2010, published in the Gazette of India on 18th September 2010. Hence, direct recruitment to the posts of assistant professors, associate professors and professors in the universities and colleges shall be on the basis of merit through all India advertisements and selections by the duly constituted selection committee as per the provisions under these regulations.
How then does this prevent the Vice Chancellor from exerting any discretionary powers?
The Vice Chancellor is permitted by these regulations to call experts only from an approved panel, not any expert he or she chooses. We wish you to note that only the centres and, in the case of single centres, schools are empowered to send names of panels of experts to the Academic Council for approval. The Vice Chancellor, who must necessarily belong to only one discipline, cannot possibly choose experts for all the subjects. This approval clause is the sole inbuilt check against any misuse of powers vested in the Vice Chancellor in matters of appointment of faculty.
This makes the role of the centre, schools critical to identify experts in different fields based on specialisation. And the Academic Council, statutorily the highest academic body of the university, verifies the list. The most recent list was asked to be prepared through this process on 17th June 2016 and the 141st Academic Council approved the list. It is in the Annex A1 in the file.
Did the list subsequently get the approval of the Executive Council?
Before the Academic Council minutes had been approved by the members, it was placed before the 266th meeting of the Executive Council under Agenda 6.1 with an additional crucial line added and included in the minutes. The Vice Chancellor had been authorised to finalise the names to the panel before placing them for approval of the Executive Council.
Did the Executive Council accept the additional provision?
Their elected teachers' representative raised the issue that the Academic Council recommendations required prior circulation and approval by its members. More important, the Vice Chancellor was asked if he had already added any names to the list which was being presented. Hence, the list placed before the Executive Council that day did not contain any additional names. It was deliberately left open for the Vice Chancellor to add when he wanted or who he wanted.
The Vice Chancellor went to great lengths to record his additional discretionary powers which he was bestowing on himself.
Were any dissents recorded?
Four members of the Executive Council recorded their dissent. The story didn't end there. The same Executive Council, in its minutes arbitrarily quoted a 1997 resolution which had never come up in the course of the discussion.
The infamous 1997 resolution of 17th and 18th March, recorded in the Executive Council minutes, but please note, it was not produced in any original form, only quoted. It says, "Resolled to authorise the Vice Chancellor to make additions whenever necessary in the panel of experts and such names be reported to the Academic Council at its subsequent meetings." Resolution number 5.11 dated 15th April 1997.
The elected teacher representative to the Executive Council made it clear that the 1997 resolution was illegitimately brought in to justify the enhancement of the discretionary power of the Vice Chancellor.
The dissent notes point out that no such authorisation was part of the resolution adopted by the Academic Council. And it required Academic Council confirmation to be included in the Executive Council agenda.
It should also be noted that between 1997 and 2017, the new University Grants Commission regulations regarding selection committees have come into force. The 1997 resolution is not consistent with these statutory provisions.
Therefore, please note that the discretionary powers being given to the Vice Chancellor to make amendments to the panel is not consistent with existing Statute 272 of the university.
Was approval henceforth sought from the Academic Council? Did the Academic Council deliberate on it and give its approval?
The subsequent Academic Council meeting was called on 24th and 26th December 2016 during vacation time with only 55 members being present. The Vice Chancellor tried his best to win approval but failed to get any majority with 34 out of the 55 members opposing it. A letter by the members and one eyewitness account give a vivid description of the details of 142nd Academic Council which we would like to present to the jury as Annex A2.
The minutes of the meeting recorded the resolution passed though not unanimously. Since then, in almost every selection committee for faculty appointments, the exercise of discretionary powers have become the norm. They have not been used for exceptional circumstances but to circumvent the official lists provided by centres and schools, approved by Academic Council and sanctified by the statute.
The Vice Chancellor since then has sought post fact to approval of names he has added to the experts but refused to share even the details of these with the members of the Executive Council who are officially appointing the faculty. Hence, the Executive Council was sanctioning appointment letters without knowledge of the qualifications or any details on the selection committee members.
Even the 1997 resolution required the Vice Chancellor to report the additions he made to the panel of experts, not only to the Executive Council but also to the Academic Council.
By a sleight of hand, the Vice Chancellor has done away with the role of the Academic Council in the approval process.
How?
In the 269th Executive Council, the Vice Chancellor engineered till date his most dangerous move on amendment of Regulation M18. This was tabled in the minute and hence not pre-circulated which would eliminate the requirement of approval of experts by the Academic Council. After this amendment, effectively, the panel of experts is entirely under the control of the Vice Chancellor. Please see it as Annex A3, the agenda of the Executive Council which sought to amend M18.
Having presented all the arguments and evidence, we ask you if this is due to mere human error or ignorance. Can it only be in experience or apertitude knowing the system of the university which he heads? Can we just dismiss all the evidence and dissent on the grounds that he will remedy the situation soon and take sound advice from his colleagues who have been in the JNU a little longer than him?
Notes of dissent, notes of dissent have been signed by some of the senior most and experienced deans and chairs who rightly felt at the time of the selection committee that the process has been undermined with definite ulterior motives and not the very best candidates were being selected. These dissent notes are conveniently omitted when presented for approval to the Executive Council. We have presented to the jury the statutes, notes of dissent by members of the Academic Council and Executive Council when the Vice Chancellor was subverting all the norms of the selection processes. We have also presented voices from inside and outside the JNU community who has written about this in the larger public domain.
We asked the jury, the larger community and public if someone who is above board as the Vice Chancellor should be go to such lengths to rest for himself such discretionary powers in a selection process. Powers which the law does not vest in him and which the faculty does not wish him to have.
Would someone who is concerned about his reputation for integrity and of the institution he heads do what he has done in grabbing discretionary powers? Is it possible that the majority of the experts from the approved panels were all suddenly unavailable and can we believe him when he asks us to trust him? If there were legitimate reasons, then why were the actions shouted in secrecy?
We charge the Vice Chancellor today of undermining the integrity of the selection process of faculty appointments, rigging it and using means to conduct impartial and partial and partisan selections. We appeal to all to immediately reinstate the Statute 26 and compel him to conduct selections in a fair and impartial way according to rules clearly laid out. The names should be taken only from the panel of experts, painstakingly prepared with specialisation of the discipline in mind by the centres and schools. It has ensured fair practice for so many years. Failing this, we implore you to inflict the harshest possible punishment on him and the administration for an offence which can kill a public institution of high standard and credibility.
After this extremely powerful presentation by my senior colleagues, I am afraid I may not be able to match in my presentation skills but I hope the gravity of issue that I present before you would adequately compensate. I stand here to present the statement in support of Article 3 of Charge which is about damaging the interests of students, aspiring for research, wasting public money and violating the Central Educational Institutions Act and the reservation policy. Under the present Vice Chancellor's leadership, admissions to JNU in the year 2017-18 were drastically cut by deliberate misuse of the UGC Minimum Standards and Procedures for Award of MPhil/PhD Degrees Regulation 2016 and by turning a blind eye to the Central Educational Institutions Reservation and Admissions Act 2016. This has deprived a large number of potential students from gaining admission to a premier university of the country. This was directly in violation of the CEI Act passed by the Parliament in 2006. Changes in admission policies and shoddy implementation of admissions has resulted in a drastic reduction in the intake of students from deprived communities. JNU is primarily a research university and typically, research programmes account for about two-thirds of its student strength. Many centres in the university have only MPhil or PhD programmes. Apart from teaching in postgraduate classes, in most, supervising research scholars is primary duty of teachers in most centres. Stifling research programmes has thus meant a huge waste of resources in JNU. The seat cut was introduced in the most autocratic manner in JNU. Some of this was discussed on the first day as part of discussion on Article 1 and I would, because of positivity of time, not get into details but some of this has been spelt out in the submission we have made. After the sort of forcibly recording the minutes of Academic Council as approved, the disputed minutes of Academic Council were, meetings were placed before the Executive Council before these were confirmed by, before these had even been confirmed by the Academic Council. But more importantly, all further decisions have been taken directly by the JNU Vice Chancellor or by the administration directly under orders from the Vice Chancellor without consulting the Board of Studies of Schools or the Academic Council of JNU. These included completely flawed calculation of the intake, giving up the policy of deprivation points for research programmes, computation of reserved category seats for each centre and and derecognising the pre-PhD programmes in science schools and enforcing 100% weightage to YVOC marks. As we attempt to show the consequences of these decisions for which JNU Vice Chancellor has been directly responsible, have been disaster for JNU's academic programmes. The first point is that this has prevented a large number of research scholars from gaining admission to a premier university. I would like to bring to your attention this table which shows number of seats announced by the JNU administration which were 84% less than the intake approved by the Academic Council in 2017-18. While number of seats offered was reduced by 1,067, the shoddy implementation resulted that not even 194 research students for which the seats had been announced were actually allowed to take admission. As yet, there is no official document that would tell us how many students have actually managed to get admitted to different programmes this year. The C.H.E. in 2011-12 had indicted JNU for not utilising resources fully on account of giving admission to fewer students than the agreed intake every year. I have given Annex A1 which shows you this. Even after that, the actual intake in research programmes has been below the 969 candidates that JNU was required to take as per the CEI Act 2016. And I have given you here the actual admissions that have taken place each year from 2010 to 2016-17. In other words, the current strength of research students is less than what it would have been had all the seats filled every year. Over this period, the strength of the faculty has increased faster than the student intake so that the average number of research scholars, that is MPhil and PhD students supervised by a teacher has fallen steadily since 2012 and was only 8.5 per teacher in 2016. And this table gives you these numbers. This simple statistic exposes the lie that has been spread about JNU teachers supervising unrealistically unrealistic number of research students. The seat cut has thus led to a massive waste of faculty and other resources. As many as 32 centres which with a total faculty strength of 308 had zero admissions in their MPhil programmes in 2017. This means that 308 faculty members and others who join during this academic year have no coursework teaching to do in 2017-18 academic year, no work of supervising dissertation in 2018-19 academic year, no students moving into PhD programmes in 2019-20. These 30 centres with zero admissions to their research programmes include centres that have only MPhil and PhD programmes and no or limited teaching responsibilities in M.A./M.S.E. programmes. Even in centres with a positive intake, the numbers are very small and there are just one in several centres and therefore, most faculty in these centres will also not have students to supervise for their MPhil dissertations in 2018-19. The third point, violation of CEI Act. The Central Educational Institution Act 2016 mandated all institutions to increase intake by 54% over the level of intake in 2016-2006. I have given detailed quotations from clauses relevant to this. The seats declared by JNU administration in 2017-18 were directly in violation of the CEI Act 2016-2006. In 2006-7, the intake of MPhil/PhD and direct PhD programmes was 683. As a result of CEI Act itself, the seats increased by 54% to 1055. Intake in almost all the programmes in JNU had remained fixed at that level, that is, 2006-11 plus 54% from the time the CEI Act was fully implemented until 2016-17. Almost all the increase in intake since implementation of the CEI Act 2006 had been on account of new programmes that were started in JNU. And I have shown here in a table the intake in 2016-17 in old programmes and in new programmes and as you can see, the intake in old programmes was almost same as the JNU was supposed to have as a result of CEI Act. It is worth noting that the UGC had earlier pressed for implementation of the CEI Act and utilisation of additional grants given to universities for enabling this expansion. I have given the documents from UGC that support this. While the CEI Act originally required the universities to expand their capacity and increase intake over a period of three years, this was subsequently extended to six years which came to an end in 2012. In a letter dated June 3, 2016, which is after the May 2016 UGC regulations are finalized, the UGC sent a letter to all central educational institutions asking them to comply with the CEI Act. The letter specifically said, "University may follow the reservation policy in admissions in all courses as per provisions contained in the CEI Act and as amended in 2012." The letter included a copy of the Gazette notification which spelt out requirements for universities to maintain a minimum intake as specified in the CEI Act 2006. However, while the JNU Vice Chancellor selectively chose to implement the May 2016 UGC regulations, he decided to arbitrarily ignore the said letter dated June 3 which required him to implement the provisions of CEI Act in admission to all courses. It is also of note that the intake approved by JNU Academic Council for 2017-18 on which the cut was applied by the VC ensured little more than compliance with CEI Act. So all that Academic Council was doing was ensuring that JNU upholds the CEI Act which is what the VC subsequently cut. I would like to stop here and then give the mic to my colleague Hemantan Adlaka who will take on and present this.
Thank you Vikas. Members of the jury, we just heard the part one of the Article 3 of the Charge Sheet which was telling us the massive seat cuts which happened in the last year's admissions in JNU. In fact, in many centres, especially the large centres in some of the schools because of the no admissions last year. I remember in my school, in Centre for Indian Languages, which is the largest centre in the school and attracts largest number of students in the school from regional backward regions and from other categories of candidates who apply to JNU. They were all, they had to go back and in fact, they called themselves the final MA students of last year who did not have the chance to apply for MPhil or PhD in JNU. They called themselves the Shahidi Batch, the Martyrs' Batch, you know. And so I'll come to the second part of the Charge, Article 3 of the Charge which is basically highlighting the how this Vice Chancellor has grossly undermined the affirmative action policy or the deprivation points of JNU and also the inconsistencies in computation of the data between last year and the admissions for the coming year. First, the affirmative action policy or the deprivation points policy of JNU, how it has been attacked. There are a couple of points there. I'll try to be quick and brief. First is undermining the reservation of seats. As per the constitutional mandate, the university is required to reserve 15% of seats for scheduled cast candidates, 7.5% for scheduled tribe candidates and 27% seats for OBC candidates. In terms of the number of seats that were reserved for these categories, JNU failed to meet this constitutional requirement in 2017-18. This was done because the reservations were implemented only at the level of individual centres and since the number of seats available were very few in many centres which had some admission, there were no reserved seats for some of these categories. If these reservation percentages have to be implemented at the level of individual centres, a centre has to have at least six seats to have one reserved seat for SC and at least 15 seats to have one reserved seat for the scheduled tribe candidate. Of the 12 centre schools that had, if you see the table in the documents which have been provided to you, Table 6 that gives you some figures about how of the total 12 centres or schools which had admissions last year for MPhil/PhD programme, only four centres, I mean the four centres had no seat reserved for SC and as many as 10 centres had no seat reserved for ST candidates. Of the three schools that had admissions for MPhil/PhD JRF category, one had no seat for SC and none had any seat for ST. For 11 centres or schools that had direct PhD admissions, seven had no seats for scheduled tribe candidates and 10 had no seats for scheduled caste candidates. Point number two, barring qualified candidates from selection on reserved seats. Even in centre schools where some seats were reserved, very few candidates were able to get admissions. The statutory provisions require that candidates from several categories, that is SC, ST and OC, non-criminally and differently able, are given in a relaxation of five percentage points in entrance test in JNU. This was given up last year and all candidates were required to get 50% marks in the qualifying exam. According to UGC regulation, new regulations of 2016, the admissions to MPhil/PhD process takes place in a two-stage process. The first stage requires candidates to clear a qualifying entrance exam. All students who qualify the exam are then required to appear in an interview through which candidates are selected given the number of seats available. Without going into the merit of the prescribed selection process, we would like to submit that the manner in which JNU implemented the regulation was wrong and illegal. As per the UGC Regulation 2016, everyone who qualifies the first stage of the exam is deemed qualified and thus eligible depending upon the availability of seats and other resources. Other resources mean, for example, supervisor in the proposed area of work. However, JNU administration decided to pick a leaf from the earlier system of admission in JNU that is before 2017-18 and imposed a passing mark in the scores given in the interviews. As a result, a number of candidates who had qualified and may have been admitted were prevented. were prevented from gaining admission because JNU imposed a passing mark of thirty percent in the interview without having, and it was shocking, this thirty-five, thirty percent mark for interview were not even told or informed or notified to the candidates. There were no guidelines that spelled out the candidates had to obtain any passing marks. Centers used different scales and methods to rank candidates without any idea that a passing mark would be imposed on the score given to the candidates. A significant number of candidates from reserve categories were thus wrongly disqualified in the second stage. Point number three is doing away with the system of deprivation points. It may also be noted that the JNU has a long history of using deprivation points to help candidates who have been a victim of caste, class and gender disadvantage, gain admission to various points. After reservations were introduced, deprivation points were given to candidates from backward regions to Kashmiri migrants and to women or transgender candidates. This system of deprivation points has historically been crucial in ensuring that JNU remain accessible to candidates who had faced various kinds of disadvantages and lack of opportunity. The system of deprivation points was widely hailed as a model of affirmative action that actually needed to be emulated by other institutions. And all those who have been part of JNU either as students or faculty would know that how these deprivation points played a very instrumental role, very important role in giving the character to JNU, the JNU, the character which has. However, the current Vice Chancellor, without any approval of the Academic Council, decided to do away with the system of deprivation points for admissions to research programs. The direct implication of this would have been a reduction in intake of students from backward regions and of women transgender candidates. The university administration must provide data to verify how many such students managed to gain admission last year and how this compares with JNU's performance in earlier years. And we still have no data available from the university administrations about last year's admissions. Point number four, making the admission process subject to greater arbitrariness and subjectivity. Over the last few years, JNU community has debated the need to reduce subjectivity in selection of candidates through interviews. JNU Student Union had been demanding a reduction in the weighted of Viva OC marks, that is from thirty percent to fifteen percent in admissions to MPhil PhD programs. This was an important item of agenda of the one forty-first and one forty-second meeting of the Academic Council last year and was debated at length in both the meetings. While opinion of members varied on the quantum of reduction of Viva OC marks, most members including JNU administration had agreed that the Viva marks should be reduced. However, in a complete turnaround, JNU administration decided to make Viva, Viva marks the only stage on which the final selection for MPhil PhD and direct PhD programs depended. In order to justify their position, it was falsely made out as if the NAFE Committee, which was constituted to review the weighted of Viva marks in MPhil PhD admission, was concerned with Viva weighted of programs other than MPhil PhD. In reality, the NAFE Committee report did not deal with the programs other than MPhil PhD at all. And we have the minutes of the NAFE Committee and how it was discussed and distorted in the Academic Council meeting that is there in the documents with you, I will not read that, just save time, I'll move on to the other points. The final point under this category of deprivation points, attack on deprivation points and affirmative policies is lack of transparency. As per JNU's ordinances, the Vice Chancellor is obliged to report to the Academic Council the actual number of candidates that have been admitted in different programs. However, the VC has neither called the Academic Council meeting so far nor has he made public, made public any information on actual admissions. Information collected by Januta from various center schools showed that of one thirty-nine seats in various research programs announced by the JNU administration, admissions were given to only seventy-four candidates. In all of the university, only three candidates from SC category, one candidate from ST category and thirteen candidates from OBC categories and none from differently able category got admission. This is in an extra nine. Of the few candidates belonging to these categories, some had qualified to get admission under the general category. As a result, the actual intake under the reserve categories was even lower. Now, the second, last part of this article three, charge three of is the inconsistencies between computation of intake for two thousand seventeen eighteen and for the coming year. JNU administration under the current Vice Chancellor has been able to implement even the May two thousand sixteen UGC regulations properly and consistently. While the administration issued guidelines for computing the intake for two thousand seventeen eighteen and two thousand eighteen nineteen, these have not been used to do the actual calculation of intakes. As per these guidelines, while faculty members who have excess students cannot supervise any new students until the number of their students fall below the ceiling, faculty members who have vacancies are eligible to take new students. However, last year, in reality, the administration canceled vacancies of faculty members against excess students of other faculty members, resulting in very little intake. They have not done that in two thousand eighteen nineteen, which is one of the reasons for a substantial increase in intake of direct PhD students from sixty-four last year to three hundred and thirty-nine for the coming year. The irrationality of the calculation is shown by the fact that three hundred and thirty-nine is well above the figure that used to be admitted before two thousand seventeen to direct PhD. While the intake for integrated MPhil PhD program, the main route of entry into research programs is still well below. This is true even individually from many centers. Last year, JNU administration also insisted that science schools in JNU had to discontinue the pre PhD programs through which students with MSc degrees could register for PhD. This was an important route for admission to PhD programs in subjects in which MPhil programs do not exist, including in JNU. In a letter dated August twenty-second two thousand seventeen, which is provided in an extra thirteen here, the UGC has clarified that candidates with postgraduate degrees with at least fifty-five percent marks are indeed eligible for admission to PhD. And therefore, the university administration's position has been shown to be false. Consequently, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, the pre PhD program have been merged with direct PhD programs. Another change that explains the substantial increase in direct PhD seats when compared, for the coming year when compared with the last year. In fact, the fact that JNU has announced an intake of three hundred and thirty-nine for direct PhDs in two thousand eighteen nineteen raises the question as to why many of these seats were not open for admission last year. On the other hand, in, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, JNU administration refused to allow for the possibility that a student could do MPhil with one supervisor who has vacancies for MPhil students and do PhD with another supervisor who has vacancies for PhD students. As a result, many faculty members who had vacancies for MPhil students were not allowed to take MPhil students. As a result, even in two thousand eighteen nineteen, the intake announced for MPhil program is only three hundred and eighty-one. As per JNU's programs, MPhil is a two-year degree of which the first year comprises coursework. While teachers are engaged in teaching these students in the classroom, there is no burden of research supervision for these students. In most centers, allocation of supervisors takes place only at the end of the first year. Despite this, the university has insisted that these students will have to be accounted for as being supervised by somebody. In fact, there is another thing which I want to point out and we had received a circular at a very short notice before the MPhil Vivas were to be conducted for admission wherever there were seats. And we received a circular which said that the MPhil candidates have to go to the centers and find out a supervisor. If they can't find out a supervisor, then they will not be called for Viva. I mean weird. Anyway, to quickly wind up the main arguments. Now, despite this, the university has insisted that these students will have to be accounted for as being supervised by somebody. This irrationally, this irrationally inflates the number of students needing supervision which then form the basis of, basis for application of caps. This has been the most important reason for a massive reduction in intake of MPhil students since last year. Now concluding. Under the current Vice Chancellor's leadership, the JNU has seen a drastic reduction in number of seats in research programs. This reduction has been directly in violation of the CII Act of two thousand six, as was pointed out earlier by Vikas and has resulted in a colossal waste of resources that had been provided to JNU for implementing the CII Act. Faculty members in many centers are unable to teach because no admissions to MPhil program took place. The manner in which the UGC regulations of two thousand sixteen have been implemented and admissions undertaken have not only undone valuable aspects of affirmative action policies in JNU and have resulted in depriving a large number of very deserving candidates from deprived categories from gaining admission to JNU. So, as we have shown, the current Vice Chancellor is singularly responsible for these and must be held accountable. Thank you.
After these thorough presentations supported by solid data painstakingly collected, we now have a defense for the Vice Chancellor. We have collected assertions of the Vice Chancellor that he routinely brings out through various notices. May I now request Dr. Rohit to present the defense for the Vice Chancellor?
He was defending.
Come to the Sabanpati Dhaba. It only takes right turn ever since two thousand sixteen. So unfortunately, that's why he is not here, but I am here to represent him and actually he told me that probably, I mean I am not a good enough lawyer, he would have ensured that, that the additional solicitor general could have come here to present him, to represent him. But unfortunately, he is busy with a personal case, a very important one. So he didn't have the time to represent the Vice Chancellor. So I am here, you have to make do with this. So on article two, the defense, by the way, this is prepared thoroughly by the JNU TA. This has nothing to do with the Vice Chancellor. He has not obviously given any time to the JNU TA, so no misconception. This is entirely, it has been fair from the JNU Teachers Association have prepared this on behalf of the Vice Chancellor who is essentially missing from the scene. As for the UGC regulations two thousand ten, the panel of experts for selection committees needs the approval of the relevant statutory body of the university. In JNU's case, the relevant statutory body is the Executive Council, is the Executive Council given the powers vested in the Council by statute fourteen. The extract from the statute given below clearly makes the Executive Council the appointing authority for faculty and it is only required to consult the Academic Council on the number qualifications and emoluments of teachers. And this is the following, the extract from the statutes. Subject to the provisions of the Act, these statutes and the ordinances, the Executive Council shall in addition to any other powers vested in it have the following powers, namely, to appoint such professors, readers, lecturers, senior fellows, fellows, associate fellows and other members of the teaching staff as may be necessary on the recommendations of the selection committees constituted for the purpose and to provide fulfilling temporary vacancies therein. To fix the emoluments and define the duties and conditions of service of professors, leaders, lecturer, lecturers, senior fellows, fellows, associate fellows and other members of the teaching staff, provided that no action shall be taken by the Executive Council in respect of the number, the qualifications and the emoluments of teachers otherwise than after consideration of the recommendations of the Academic Council. Two, regulation M eighteen was adopted by the Executive Council and it was within its powers to amend the said regulation too. The part of the amendment adopted at the two sixty-ninth meeting of the Executive Council held on eighteen September two thousand seventeen, which removed the requirement of panel of experts proposed by centers to be placed directly before the Executive Council without requiring the approval of the Academic Council is perfectly in order in light of what has been said in serial number one above. Clause fourteen of the statute fourteen further empowers the Executive Council to delegate any of its powers to the Vice Chancellor, my client, the registrar or some other officer of the university or to a committee appointed by it as it may deem fit. If therefore, the Executive Council has authorized the Vice Chancellor to add names to the panel of experts and seek post facto approval for the same, it has acted within its powers. It follows from the points raised in serials number one to three that the additions of names by the Vice Chancellor to the panel of experts for the selection committees for recruitment of faculty are not in violation of the UGC's two thousand ten regulations or statute twenty-seven of the university as any names added by the Vice Chancellor would be deemed to have approval of the relevant statutory body both before as well as after their formal approval by the Executive Council. Five, also since confidentiality about the identities of experts has to be maintained in a sensitive matter like appointments, placing all details of experts before the council at the time of approval simply because some members want to know them is also inappropriate. The same applies to sharing details of selection committee minutes. The final recommendations of selection committees should be respected even if some members dissent. Six, finally, on the issue of the public credibility of the selection process of faculty and dangers of misuse of powers, the Vice Chancellor should be trusted to have the best interest of the university he heads in mind and act accordingly. That is in any case an underpinning of statutory provisions which make the Vice Chancellor the Chair of the Selection Committee and empower him, slash her in this case him, to select the experts from the approved panel. In view of what has been said above serial number one to six, there is no basis for the charge that the Vice Chancellor is guilty of undermining the integrity of the faculty selection process. So this is the response of the Vice Chancellor on the article two by the JNU TA. I, I'm sorry, just a second. Hello? Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. Sir, 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 actually, yes, yes, sir. Yes, 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 yeah, yeah, yes, sir, yes. I, I just got a call from sir. He said that I have to also take care of the Twitter handle, but unfortunately since I am here, it is difficult to be doing both at the same time. So somebody else would be doing that, so I've assured him of the Twitter handle being taken care of. He's very happy with the presentation that I am doing, but he also wants that to be telecast properly. I, I am so sorry for, for this interruption, but then I have to take calls from sir, you know. So, defense statement on behalf of the Vice Chancellor on article three. The UGC regulations on MPhil and PhD degrees were notified under the clauses of the UGC Act which empower it to make such regulations specifying minimum standards and requirements for confirmant of degrees which are mandatory for universities to adhere to without any deviation. This has been upheld by court decisions too. Two, the university is also required by the regulations to issue a certificate prior to award of the degree stating that the degree has been awarded in accordance with the provisions of the UGC regulations two thousand sixteen. Without such a certificate, the MPhil and PhD degrees awarded to the students may not be recognized. Therefore, it was not in the interest of the students receiving these degrees that the university will fully violate the provisions of the UGC regulations. The determination of intake for research programs and the procedure followed for the admissions were as per the UGC two thousand sixteen regulations and directions of the Honorable High Court. The requirement of fifty percent in the entrance test as the uniform qualifying mark is derived from those regulations as was the requirement that the written examination would only be qualifying. Different minimum eligibility marks for admissions with appropriate relaxation for admissions under reserved categories were applied to the Viva OC as per the existing decisions of the JNU Academic Council. Reservation policy was applied as per the rules on the intake determined on the basis of the regulations. Four, once the cap on the number of MPhil PhD students per supervisor clause six point five of the UGC two thousand sixteen regulations came into force, the intake became dynamic to be determined every year keeping in mind the existing faculty and research scholars trends. As such, to claim that there was a cut in the intake is without basis. As such, to claim that there was a cut in the intake is without basis. Also, since faculty recruitment is now being given top priority, the capacity of the university to take in students in research programs can also be expected to increase rapidly. Five, the pre-existing U G C regulations two thousand nine also had placed caps on the permissible number of research students per supervisor. Part of the problem resulted from the fact that the J N U did not adhere to these, to those caps as a result of which it is already, it already had an excessive number of students. The present J N U administration did not want to repeat that mistake. It can be seen that the intake for two thousand sixteen to nineteen is already more than two thousand seventeen eighteen. Since, number six, since the intake in research programs has to be inherently dynamic, if standards are to be maintained by avoiding overload of supervisors, there is no ground for calculation of intake on the basis of clause five of the C E I Act two thousand six. The clause is being adhered to in admissions to undergraduate and the masters programs. Moreover, the Parliament of India, which enacted the C I Act two thousand six, has not overruled the U G C two thousand sixteen regulations and declared them invalid. In view of what has been said above, serial number one to six, there is no basis for the Vice Chancellor, my client, being guilty as charged under article three of the charge memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you Rohit for trying to bail out the Vice Chancellor, but we'll have to wait as to what to do with this Vice Chancellor after listening to our prominent jury members. Now, I request-